Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor and privilege to greet each of you at the start of this officially calendared and scheduled City Council meeting for the City of Vator. We will declare this meeting a call to order at 6:01 PM. We'll proceed with our roll call, dictated by our City Clerk.
Andy Wilson?
Present.
Mark Fennison is asked to be excused.
Okay.
He's out of town.
Excellent.
Joe Schei is also asked to be excused. Let's see, who's in there? Oh, Andy Wilson? Oh, no, I already said Andy Wilson. Sorry. Kevin Flynn?
I'm here.
Justin Olson?
Present.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. Appreciate the presence of our three of our five, the City Council representatives. We do have a quorum, so we'll proceed. And as is customary in the City of Vator, we begin our council meetings with an invocation. I'd invite all of you to join me with Mr. Olson. Would you be honored to host this evening?
Dear the Father, Lord, we just come to pray, God, and just seek your counsel, Lord. Or we just pray, God, just for a vision for this community. God, just help the doors that need to be opened, just open those doors. And the doors that need to be shut, just close those doors, God. We just pray, God, just for your direction. Blessed in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Mr. Olson. Now we'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance. Would we invite all to please arise. Minister Olson, would you give ours this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. It is, we'll now proceed with the Mayor's report. You'll note item one on the agenda is that I am pleased to share with the council and the members of the public that we had an extraordinarily successful Fourth of July event. The City of Vator is embracing more and more responsibilities of that event with each year that passes. Other than nature, I did try to melt us out of the holiday. I think we set a record for temperature that day, and it was a challenge in the afternoon portion of the event, but the fireworks were an extraordinary success. We had, I believe, a record crowd, and we express our appreciation to Mr. Reggie Smith, who made the event possible with the parade and all. So we look forward to embracing more responsibility next year, in 2016, as the City of Vator sponsors the next Fourth of July celebration. I thought it'd be appropriate, council members, to remind you that on September 11th, 2015, coming up, we will be beneficiaries of a group of individuals who will be providing service to the City of Vator as part of the Lewis County National Day of Service. And we've come up with a number of potential ideas, and I think we discussed those at a previous council meeting, some of which include weed eating along the city streets and perhaps a chipping project at accumulated limbs and other yard materials down at the entrance of our waste treatment plant. I was approached by another resident who has indicated a willingness, if he could get some assistance from the volunteers in the National Day of Service, to engage in a garbage collection event. So he would, if we sent a notice to the residents who had accumulated garbage and were having a difficult time dealing with it, he would bring a large trailer and go to those sites if they're willing to load it onto the trailer. We find a means to dispose of it. But it's just an idea at this point, and we haven't fleshed it out in particular. We were going to make some contacts with LeMay to see if they might also be willing to contribute a dumpster or two to accommodate that. But that's just for your information, and we'll definitely include that on our next City Council agenda to get more information. But I'd like to underscore the fact that if you have ideas that you would like to present to the sponsoring individuals of that activity, just let me know, and I'll convey it to them. Any questions on that? I did want to also bring to your attention that at our Fourth of July celebration, we borrowed the city of windlocks, barricades, and some other material that we used for traffic control. And we think that it's probably a time for the City of Vator to invest in some barricades. Can't predict when we need them, but we only have two, I believe, or three.
Two that are...
If you could cull them, barricades. They're pretty dilapidated. We have gotten the pricing on them, but I believe that I would like, as a mayor, to suggest that we consider that, and perhaps at our next council meeting, you can entertain a discussion on the feasibility of acquiring them.
How much were they?
I believe they were...
Lots of different prices and lots of different types, so...
We'd need six, and I believe that we're probably looking at from $35 to $60...
At least, yeah.
Each.
Yeah.
And with some other materials. But we did get $500 from the RMSA for our attendance at the conference. We can have to go. So that funding is to be used for anything that might enhance the safety measures in the city, and that would qualify. So it's just a thought.
Oh, so you have a, don't you have a $250 limit on stuff you can spend without having to run it through?
Four hundred dollars.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
That's self-explanatory, in my opinion.
Yeah. If it was six times sixty, it still falls within the allowable amount, but we'll keep you advised on that topic. So that concludes the topics that I would bring to the council's attention. So with that, let's proceed with our agenda approval. And I don't have any changes, oh, well, no, I don't have any specific changes to articulate at this point. Council members have any additions or corrections? Okay, then I would...
I'll put a motion up that the City Council meeting agenda for seven, nine, 2015 be approved.
You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the agenda. It's written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now we'll proceed with the approval of minutes from our previous workshop and City Council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, July 25th, 2015 workshop.
June, June 25th.
I'm sorry.
June, June 25th.
Oh, June.
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth, 2015 workshop and City Council meeting minutes.
Okay. You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Olson to approve the minutes, as written, for the workshop and City Council meeting, July, June 25th. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approvals, first half of July. Do we have council action?
Hi. Oh, yeah, you got yours before. Here's the number.
Do we await council action?
Well, I'll submit approval for the vouchers. I signed them. For the first half of July, 2015, total in $28,212.65.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion to approve the voucher expenditures and the amount noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, let's proceed with our public comment. We have somebody signed up.
Omar Sbar. Omar, Omar Sbar.
Okay. Omar, you have three minutes. You may take the podium. We welcome you here.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. What I would like to have the City Council approve is hanging a support sign for the National Guard, and I know there is Navy veterans in the council. I reside in, not exactly veteran, live outside the city limits of Vator, but Vator is where I stay, and I want to make sure that I can express that more than having a sign on private properties, and when people hang those and they show support for the Guard, and it, I don't know, it makes you feel good as a soldier that, you know, that the town is supporting, but on the city hall, you can't go more than that. It's a monumental thing. And the other thing I wanted to bring with the Guard is to see if somehow the City Council can assist or tell me how can we do a recruiting event within Vator. But the Guard won't do something like that unless, you know, there is a city approval and there is actually numbers for it, you know. There's one or two people that can qualify for that. They're not gonna bring the resources. They'll have to go to the recruiting office, but if there is numbers for it, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll come down to here and try and show people the benefits, especially young kids, the benefits of joining the Guard and supporting your own community and being within your own community. Because that's a different thing within the Guard compared to all the other branches, is that you stay within your community. You belong to Washington. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. So perhaps if the council is not opposed to it, I would not hesitate to meet with you at an appropriate time to discuss in further detail your proposal.
I'd agree with that.
Would you be okay with that? All right, with that consensus, let's get in touch and we'll put our heads together.
Excellent.
Okay, excellent.
I have one other person, Judy Costello. Were you wanting to do the public hearing part?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this isn't a public hearing yet. No, 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 this is... Oh, it's not public hearing. No, it's not public hearing. I just got trapped behind the chairs.
It was my frown.
Yes.
My name is Judy Costello. My address is 709 A Street, Vator. We have an upcoming event. Our, August the first, Saturday, is our citywide yard sale. Everybody get their stuff together. We also have our park board hot dog fundraiser. So everyone will need to come out and support our park board. Everything for that fundraiser is donated by businesses in town, so it's all profit that will go to the park board. And I have not spoken to Steve, so I do not know what he's going to use his funds for this year, but last year I think they had something earmarked. So just a little reminder of that. And if you want to be on the city map, please call me or track me down or some or another, just get with me, and I'd be happy to put your name on the city map for the citywide yard sale. Second thing briefly is I have been doing the Flowers in Vator for eight years. This year, the weather, between the sun, the heat, and the wind, I have lost seven of my large plants downtown. So with having said that, I've been pumping 30 gallons of water a day to those poor boys. And I get up at four o'clock in the morning to do that, seven days a week. Starting August the first, if I cannot breathe life into what's left out there, I may let them go to their happy resting place. So having said that, if anybody sees that they're missing, don't panic. I did my very best this year. Thank you.
Did you say August 1st for that date?
For the citywide yard sale?
Yes.
Yes, Saturday.
Will that be the same day that the park board has their hot dog sale?
Yes, and they do it on Carol Brim's big lot, under the tent.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Wilson had to come with you.
While we're on that subject, and we have one of the most prominent people here tonight, Mr. Tim, sitting back there, he's in charge of the water system. Would like to see if the Lewis County Water District may donate a few gallons of water.
I will send my bill to you, and you can deduct it.
No pressure on that.
No pressure there, Tim.
Public meeting.
Can I just clarify? Was there a cutoff for when people need to notify you to be on the map?
No, right into the last thing. I can stick them on, and then I make my copies the next morning and hand them out on the corner.
Okay.
Thank you. I imagine. Excellent report.
Good job.
Okay.
That's it.
Well, then, with that, let's proceed with the official business portion of our agenda. And a wonderful segue, Mr. Wilson, you introduced very ably our Lewis County Public Works Director, Mr. Tim Elsie. We're pleased to have you with us.
Thank you very much for having me. It's been a while since I've presented to this council. I am Tim Elsie, I'm the...
Mr. Elsie, do you have, just for the council's information, how much time you will need on this?
I'm gonna be about 10 minutes.
Very good.
Maybe a little longer, but it shouldn't be too long. I didn't realize you had a public hearing tonight, or I wouldn't have put you on the same agenda.
Okay, we welcome you.
And the Public Works Director and Vator Enchanted Valley Water System Administrator. So I'm here to give you an update on the Vator Enchanted Valley Water System. First of all, I'm happy to submit and to say that the water loss for the system has gone down significantly. I used to say that before I died, I wanted to solve the mystery of the Sphinx and the mystery of the water loss in Vator.
Still fine.
And through the construction project that we did, the $1.3 million construction project that was funded through the DWSRF, the drinking water state revolving fund, it was part grant, part loan, and CDBG grant of $1.3 million, we fixed a lot of the leaks in that. And then also, I think a lot of people are aware, that we found a large leak in 506 last year. So what that means is that when we took over the water system, the water loss was in the neighborhood of about 60 percent, and we've got that down now to about 20 percent. And that may wind up being even a little bit lower when we're done, because we measured that last year, but we didn't fix the leak until about August. So we may have quite a bit less water loss than we've had before.
So, and Tim, would that actually put it within the parameters of the Department of Health acceptable?
What a great segue. Thank you very much. Yes. So what that means is, we're in the process right now of updating the water system plan. That's a plan that has to be updated every five years. And there has been a moratorium on new water connections in the water system boundaries. We were capped at 369 connections for a long time, but what we're submitting to Department of Health is that we believe the system will handle quite a few more connections than that. Now, this is something that will have to be approved by Department of Health without a doubt, but we're looking in the neighborhood, and I don't have a hard number right now, like I said, it's gotta be approved by Department of Health, in the neighborhood of at least an additional 100 connections that the city will...
Did you say 369?
369, that's what...
269.
369. That includes Enchanted Valley.
Okay.
Okay. So then we'd be allowed 100 more than that?
That's correct. And so what that means, of course, is, you know, the water system and the ability to hook up your water system is a lot of water in the community. And so that means that, you know, it's not the only requirement that's needed, of course. If you have challenges with your wastewater treatment system, and I don't know what those are, but those would have to be solved as well. But as far as the restrictions of growth to the water system, we're, it looks like we're gonna be in a position where this, the city will be able to grow or the, within the water source area, understanding that we will always work with the city for any growth and make sure that it's within what the city wants. With that being said, I also want to state that there are some changes in requirements from the Department of Health. What has happened in the past and will continue to happen is the purification plant or the water treatment plant is classified under the Association of Boards of Certification Water Plant Classification System. The plant has been, that system classifies plants from anywhere from a one, a water treatment plant, one, which is a simple surface water treatment plant, I'm, sorry, well water treatment plant, to a water treatment plant four, which is a very complex, could be a surface water treatment plant serving a lot of individuals. We've been a WTPO two since I've been involved with the system, but with the new criteria, we're going to go to the higher classification now, to a three. So we're now going to be a water treatment plant three, which, I don't know all of the changes that that's going to make to the requirements that we have for Department of Health, but I will say, one of the things that it will change is that the certification for our water treatment plant operator is now going to be more stringent. So in the past, we've required a water treatment plant operator two or a WTPO two, and the operator, John Strom, has met those qualifications. He's now going to have to meet, or whoever our water treatment plant operator is going to have to meet, the more stringent qualifications for a WTPO three. We don't see this as being a problem. John, although he hasn't taken a test, he has all the necessary time in service, and he's worked on complex enough systems, so we do believe that he's gonna be able to get that additional certification. Not gonna be a huge issue, but I just want you to know that that's coming down the pike. Nothing, we're gonna be able to do anything about that. It's mainly due to the plant, it's treating surface water, the type of filter media that we have, those types of things. Again, not a huge issue, but I just want you to be aware of that. Also want you to be aware of some of the projects that we have completed. It's been a long time since I've given you an update on some of the projects that we've completed with the water treatment system. And I do just want to give kudos to John and the crew, and one of, you know, in my estimation, one of the good things about the county in the interim, and I do only want to say that it will be in there, being the stewards of this water system, is that when we need to put additional bodies at the water system, we can. And then when those bodies need to go away and be, not be paid for out of the water system, they go away, and they're not paid for out of the water system. So we bring people down from the road crews to help us out on occasion. I just want to say, those crews have done one heck of a job. So in the background, one of, they, I'm just gonna go through a list of some of the things that they've done in the past year and a half to two years. And it's, they've replaced the intake pump in the river. They've rebuilt one of the intake pump motor starters, had one of the turbine pumps rebuilt, had one of the 25 horsepower electric motors for the turbine rebuilt. We've replaced two finished water turbidity meters and controllers for those meters. We've replaced the two chart recorders, which are paper chart recorders, those are now paperless chart recorders, they're digital chart recorders. We've had to replace the floats in the clear well, and part of that was due to some malfunctions that we were having with the system. It was being very, very erratic for a while. So we replaced those pumps in the clear well. It's running very good now, knock on wood. It kept John up in the middle of the night for many weeks straight, as if we'd call him in the middle of the night when there was really no emergency going on. We've replaced the motor starter for the backwash pump, replaced one of the chemical pumps, and we've had some of the programming for the PLC or the programmable logic controller updated. Century League has replaced some bad phone lines for us, and in 2013, we had the reservoir cleaned and inspected. So the guys have been really busy. And not, not only that, they, they've developed a system of making sure that the hydrants get flushed, the valves get exercised, we perform maintenance and make sure that we clear the hydrants. And so I do think that they've done a heck of a job, and there's been a lot going on in the background for the last couple of years. Also, you guys are aware that we've used the Code Red system, which a lot of people refer to that as reverse 911. We've used the Code Red system on any water outages. Luckily, by the way, we haven't, and again, I'm gonna knock on wood before I say this too loud, is we haven't had any boil water advisories since April of 2011. And it was, I'm sure people remember it happened on Good Friday, and we barely were able to get that boil water advisory lifted by Easter. But we haven't had any boil water advisories since then. However, doing a lot of work on the system, we've used the reverse 911 or Code Red system. So I would encourage anyone that wants to be involved in that Code Red system to look at the county's website. There's a place there where you can just click on the Code Red system and sign up for it. So if you haven't received notifications, if it's happening in your area, please go ahead and do that. One of the other things that we've done, by the way, is, most of you guys have probably received these refrigerator magnets. And so this was a pretty low cost, well, very low cost effort on our part, but it was an endeavor to make sure that people could call us if there was any issue, and I don't want to say this too loud, but we love complaints. So if you have any complaints with the water system, you know, colors, odors, changing water pressure, if you see puddles where there aren't puddles, and you think it might be related to the water system, please use these, give us a call. We'd be more than happy to come out and look for it. Customer service is the only reason we are here. There is no reason for us to be here if it's not for our customers, so we are here for With that being said, what that means to us, at least, is that we are not the owners of this water system. We are the stewards of this water system. And I think that's something that we've consistently said, we've said to this council, we've said in public meetings. And what that means to us is that we are here for the users and that every, everything that we spend goes, or in every fee that we collect, goes 100 percent into the water system. The county is not making a dime off this water system. I know this council knows that, but I just want to assert that one more time. And, you know, we, we have to be good about that, but at the same time, if we err, we try to err on the side of not charging the water system for my time and things like that. So with that being said, and with us being stewards of the water system, I do want to bring up a couple of things now. And one is the, I've read in the paper that the city has passed one audit on the trail of passing two clean audits to get the water system back. And I just want to clarify that a little bit, in that the city currently has passed, as far as we've been able to tell from the state auditor's office, one accountability audit. The transfer agreement that we have is pretty clear in that it says that the city has to pass both a financial and an accountability audit, and two of those in succession, and both of those have to be clean before the transfer back to the city can happen. So the financial audit hasn't happened yet. It's my understanding from the state auditor that you will have to go through a financial audit this year. I have no doubt that the city will be able to pass that with line colors, but I just want to make it clear that we're, we're not to the point that we've had the one clean audit in accordance with the agreement. The agreement, like I say, says that there will be an accountability and a financial audit. Any questions on that? Okay, also, as far as all the money going back into the water system, you've no doubt heard that the, the county and the city are in negotiations about the meter reads and about the, the county charging the city for providing the meter reads. And as you're aware, we go out and we read the meters every other month, and with that information, we put our bills out, but we've also been providing that information to the city, and the city puts out sewer bills with that same information. Our attorney has come in and said that we can't do that for free, that that's a service that we're providing for free. And when you think about it, if the city were providing both services, the water and the sewer, to make sure that they split the cost, it would split the cost of the meter reads between the two utilities. So what we're asking for, and what we're in negotiations with, and I'm sure we'll get there, is that the city pays half of the county's cost. Now, we're not talking administrative costs or any of that, it will be the direct costs that we have for John Strom and the pickup. And it's in the neighborhood, after July 1st, it's gonna be about $560 is the total cost, so it would be half of that every two months. So we're talking, you know, less than $300 every two months, but just so you know, that's out there, and that's the county's position on that, and why we feel that we have to do that. Also, in, in working with the residents, since we've had the water system, one of the things that we've had happen on occasion is that a resident, a business, and sometimes even the city... even the city, would have a water leak on their side of the meter. And what that means is that there would be a high bill that would come out. In an effort to be your kinder, gentler water system, the county has a practice of normalizing those water bills, and for, for one time. And the reason for that is simple and complicated at the same time. It's simple in that we believe that we shouldn't pile on someone who's going through a tough time, and if someone has a high water bill, and they've already had to have a plumber come out and fix it, that one time, it's probably a good thing for us to do as the water utility to normalize that bill. When I, when I say we normalize that bill, what I mean by that is that we go back to the previous three billing cycles, and we do an average of what that bill would be. And it, it's a little bit more complicated than that, not a whole lot, but our policy has been that we only do that once. The reason for only doing that once is we think one time is a good use of the water system funds, but more than that, then the other rate payers shouldn't have to pay for one person's issues with the water system. So the last year, April a year ago, the city had a water leak at the wastewater treatment plant, and our operator found that out when he went to read the meters, notified the city, but by the time the city was able to fix that, it had turned into a pretty large bill, and it was $856.61. And so the city asked for relief on that, and we did normalize that bill, and it came to $317 after we normalized that bill. So this year, again, we had another leak down at the wastewater treatment plant. And generally, like I say, we would not normalize two bills for, for one user when they're going through. But one of the things, oh, by the way, the, the bill came up to $1,245.75 this time, so it's a pretty significant bill. One of the things that we would like to offer is that we will normalize that one more time for the city, and that normalization would be $402.60 using the same formulation that we've always used for all the other customers. But we would also like to ask that we all agree that that's the last time that we're going to normalize a bill in this situation. We'd also like if the city could put a valve in on the city's side of the wastewater treatment plant meter, so that if our operator notices a leak, we can reach down and turn it off and call the city. And the city can also shut it off themselves while they're looking for their leak, so we don't get into a situation where we're wasting so much water, especially in a situation like a dry water here, like we're having right now. And with that, by the way, I know everyone has heard that we're in a drought in Washington, and I just want to report that the, we don't expect any major issues with the Vader water system. Certainly, it could get worse than what projections are right now, but because of the fact that we have water retention structures upstream, and we have a fairly normalized water flow coming to the Collis River, we don't expect that there are any significant problems with this water system. Now, we do expect in other areas of the county there will be problems, and I don't know if you've heard, but the town of PL right now is experiencing low flows like they would in the month of August, and that was actually in June. So we do think that other water systems are going to have issues, and I just want to say, we're lucky enough here that we're not going to have any huge issues, or don't project any huge issues. Finally, some of my cards are up here, and I'll leave them here if anybody wants to give me a call, and that's my report.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Dan, I haven't been down there for a long, long time, but I was just curious, how is my HD pipe that goes up the 506 doing? Is it still holding up?
It is still holding up, it is doing fine, absolutely. And I think you'll remember that we put the baffles back down in the intake.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I tell you, when I found out we could use HD pipe, we got rid of the old transite that the old boys used to have go down there in the wintertime with shovel because you couldn't get down there.
That transite pipe, as I think everyone here is aware, has been a real challenge for the water system, has been a real challenge for the county running the water system.
Another question is that, how is the intake structure, is it still getting a lot of silt out of the collis?
Not as bad, because of what we've done with the intake pump. So we, we have to flush it and clean it out every once in a while, but it's not as bad as it used to be.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I used to be very enthused about it when I was mayor.
Well, I have to tell you, the water treatment plant and the system is an engineering marvel, as far as I'm concerned. It's a living, breathing bean, and it's difficult, it's moody, it has its issues, just like I do, but it is an engineering marvel, it produces very high quality water, we haven't had any compliance issues with Department of Health regulations. The intake structure, you know, we've had to replace some of the components of the pumps, rebuilt one of the pumps completely, replaced the intake pump itself. We have three pumps that pump it from the intake structure up to the water treatment plant. They alternate, we have two on a cycle, and they alternate back and forth. We've got one offline right now as we're looking at rebuilding part of that, but we still have the two other, so we're in really good shape. It, it's a very good system, it's a strong system, especially now that we've replaced a lot of the distribution lines.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you. If you don't mind. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
We do appreciate the county's assistance. I'd like to perhaps extend a comment to the council members here, that we've heard a lot, you did squeeze 20 pounds of potatoes in a 10-pound sack, and some of the information you provided, I think, is worthy of response, but I'd like to assimilate it first if the council is not opposed to it, and perhaps in our next meeting, we can address some of the observations that you've shared with us.
Absolutely, if you'd like me to come back and do one, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, it may be appropriate. But I do feel that our system has been in good hands, and you've been operating it quite professionally, and we're grateful. So with that, let's proceed with our next item. Item two, council to discuss employee salary schedule. I would like to note to the council that it was our good intention to try and have an example, perhaps a prototype of a salary structure for you. I've been out of town and out of touch for the last five days or so, and so we've tried to come up with a document for you, even on the phone as I was driving back this afternoon, though we're not successful. So I've been asked by the city employees, the city clerk in particular, to hold off on discussion of that until we can figure, the figures that are not only acceptable to the employees but to the mayor before we share that prototype with you. So with the council's deference, I would like to table this agenda item until our next council.
Okay.
Would you be okay with that, council members?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that. Then item number three, council to consider authorizing the mayor to seek bids for our grant project areas. I know that items four and five are similar, but we have resolutions, now we're not referring to that, we're referring to the street paving projects.
Yes. Number three is regarding the street projects that won't be qualifying for grant.
Grant money.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think we need a motion.
We just need a nod of approval on that, correct?
I think a motion.
Well, no, you're right, because I just read the documents 10 minutes before the meeting started. And what we're looking at are, are projects involved paving 10th Street and Alpine, and we will need to seek some bids on that particular paving project. We've solicited informal feedback from a couple of companies, but one pricing was so extraordinarily high that we would like to pursue one or two more. So yes, I think a motion would be appropriate for that.
Okay, I'll put a motion on the table to, for the council to consider authorizing mayor to seek bids for grant project areas on the streets, namely 10th Street, what was the other one?
And Alpine Court.
Alpine Court.
Okay, so you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to authorize the mayor to solicit bids, estimates for paving services, and for potential grant funding associated with that paving. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
A second by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Thank you for that. Now, this is a, this is a continuation from previous council discussion, item four, to consider resolution 11-2015, contract for environmental review services. This relates to the property that the council is, the city is in the process of acquiring south of the Warden Park. So hopefully, you've had a chance to review the paperwork involving that resolution.
Do we need to have two resolutions for this, or do we need, can we just put this as one, because it's all on the?
There are two separate contracts.
They're two separate.
Two separate companies, so that's why we need two separate.
One is appraisal services, and the other is environmental review.
Okay.
So yes.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to move to approve resolution 11-2015, authorizing the mayor to execute the environmental review services contract with Insight Geological Incorporated substantially in the form attached to the resolution.
Excellent, okay. We heard the motion submitted by Mr. Wilson to council as read. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, similar, the council action would be applicable to item number five, resolution 12-2015.
There is one minor, minor, minor change. I neglected to remove one of the insurance requirements that didn't apply to appraisal companies, and I'll just tell you real quick, on page eight of the contract, it is item 13, insurance, it's item B3, employer's liability. She is not an employer, she is self-employed, so that part would be stricken. And that's been approved through our, both our attorney and.
You say E3 or B3?
B is the boy.
Okay.
Page eight, so delete that, item three in its entirety. Thank you for that.
I'd like to put a motion on the table. I move to approve resolution 12-2015, authorizing the mayor to execute the real estate appraisal service contract with National Appraisal Company substantially in the form attached to resolution, but also include the deletion under B, page eight, item B, item three, or subitem three.
Okay, and you heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the resolution 12-2015 with, as noted, and with the deletion of 13.
I have a question.
No, we have a motion, though, before we proceed with a question, we'd need a second on that motion.
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Wilson. Okay, now, council, any comments or questions?
What I'm concerned about is how come we have to pay $1,500 for an appraiser from Battle Brown, Oregon, I'm Washington, when we could come into Lewis County for probably half that cost, and we could use that money?
Well, that begs a question. I will jump in before our city clerk does, and we did submit requests for bids for services, and we did get one from within Lewis County.
I think it was Longview, but?
Close, neighboring city, and it was $4,500.
Appraiser?
Yep.
So that serves.
That's crazy.
They have to do a commercial appraisal, number one, on that property, because they have to get, appraise it for its most valuable use, and so they are required to do a commercial appraisal. And this appraiser was willing to do kind of a revised appraisal, understanding our situation, and, and that the value of the property itself, and, and that we don't need something so in-depth. She's willing to do a slightly, what do you call it when you make something smaller?
Adjustable.
A report that doesn't, won't take as much time and as much detail, but will give us the information that we need to show that the value of the property is sufficient to support the price that we're paying. And that's why I was thinking that appraisal would only be $400 or $500, that's typically what a residential appraisal is, but unfortunately, in this situation, a number of appraisers, and one that I know personally, all said that it needed to be done as a commercial appraisal, and those are much more expensive.
Glad I know them now, I wish I'd known them before.
Well, we were all starting to discover, and it's all together, it's almost 40% of the price we've paid, so it's stock security, they will be Mr. Appraiser. In any event, okay, any additional questions or comments from council members? Hearing that, then let's put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. That will clear a log jam relating to the purchase and acquisition of that property, doubling the size of our city clerk. Now, we'll proceed with the last item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. It, we're now sitting at the 6:47 mark. I would informally adjourn the city council meeting to convene an official public hearing in which the council will hear public comment on ordinance 2015-05, which is an interim ban on marijuana businesses within the Vader City limits. It is a prerogative of the council, having engaged in several previous public hearings on this topic, to establish the parameters of the meeting, by which I mean the time of it, the length, and the specifics of the public input to the council. So my position is to simply moderate the meeting according to the wishes and will of the council. So with that, I would, at the turn, we've officially convened this public hearing at 6:48 PM. And then I would invite the council to establish a timeframe for it. And if you're so inclined, to establish some.
How many people signed up?
I have three people signed up. Was there anybody who missed it that wanted to sign up?
We do have a question from a member of the public, the council care to address that.
Sure.
While you're thinking about your timeframe, will we be able to ask questions nicely of anyone that's speaking during this, since it is a public meeting? If we're nice and raise our hand and?
The objective of this meeting is for the public to have a forum to provide their opinions and insight to the council. It, I don't believe it's necessarily, unless the council deemed it appropriate, to be a cross-examination process.
We went through this before, where we had answered questions, quizzing, and at that meeting, we decided that from now on, if we're having a public hearing and people have something to say, get up and say it, and it's not going to be a cross-examination, it's not going to be a quizzing, so.
But with that included, if there was a member of the public who had a question for a member of the public.
They come out, they're, they're timed a lot, but, so whatever, we determine the time, that seven minutes, 10 minutes, whatever it is, that'd just be a part of their time?
Yep. Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, you're familiar with that? So what, would you like to establish time limits to the?
Well, since there are only three, and it is just 10 minutes of seven, you know, we should be able to do 10 minutes apiece and solve any problems that they would have. Are any questions, does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Reasonable? Say 30 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, so 10 minutes per person. Right with that, given the value of each minute in this, we'll officially begin the public presentation of comments to the council. public presentation of comments to the council at ten minutes to seven.
Omar.
Well, council, mayor, public, I was happy to see that.
Just state your name.
My name is Omar Sfar, I live on State Route five oh six. Just again outside of a little bit of city limit, but still the address is greater. I was happy to see that Vator is gonna ban permits for pot or marijuana, whatever you wanna call it, simply because it's gonna put Vator on a different place. Vator is gonna be city on a hill, as being referred. Everybody knows what's city on a hill and Vator is gonna be the one. And I know that the state approved it and legalized it, but it's just gonna keep Vator, my opinion, and I've seen it happening in other towns, it's gonna keep Vator cleaner and more organized and there's gonna be less problems, especially when law enforcement is not within Vator. You can say I'm a little bit narrow-minded or odd school approach, but I was really, really happy to see that.
Do you think that?
Yes, not a cross-examination.
So that's all I wanted to give my personal input, that it made me feel even better about saying that I'm from Vator. It, it's a small thing that adds up to being from Vator because it represents, or that ban will represent my, at least my personal opinion.
Okay, so not ten minutes worth?
No, I'm, I just wanted to give a footnote to the, to the council or the mayor for doing something like that. I, it would surprise me for the positive surprise.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Well reasoned.
Brandon Milton.
My name is Brandon Milton. I own the industrial property on the west side of town and I'm an applicant for licenses that would allow me to process and grow marijuana. So I'm a proponent of bringing marijuana to Vator. And I'm hoping I can take a few minutes and I could use more than ten minutes to describe this if people want to hear it. But there have been several new changes to the law at the state level that affect us all here in Vator in a very important way. So while it may seem reasonable to think from Omar's perspective, the council's perspective, that if we throw a ban down, that we're gonna keep marijuana out of the city, the opposite is actually true. What they've done is two important things. They have reconciled the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana. So this means that there is no distinction anymore as far as what stores are gonna sell what products. So stores that are an existing medical outlet are gonna be forced to either shut down or they're gonna have to apply the same state license that any other store, such as my operation, would get as well. In other words, it's all regulated in the same state system. Under the old system, we had kind of this quasi gray market where people were allowed to grow marijuana in collective gardens. There are a lot of those operating in the city of Vator right now. This has been the subject of some consternation, I think, on the part of the city council and a lot of people living here, that people are allowed to grow marijuana here and there throughout the city. But it's largely tolerated because it's a gray area thing and the state says it's okay. And it hasn't been as big of a problem for us here in the city because that product is all wholesale to the dispensaries, which are out of town. So you have small growers throughout the city wholesaling their products elsewhere where it's bought and retailed by the public. That all changes though, under this new law. So under this new law, those collective gardens are now banned. You can't have them anymore. But there's a big if. You know, the if is, they're only banned if you're close to a retail legal outlet. So if you go up to Centralia, say, where they have a legal outlet for marijuana, you also cannot have these collective gardens. So no more backyard pot growing near a retail place. If you do not have a retail place, however, they have increased the number of plants you can have. So you may think that a ban means that you ban it, you get out of town. The opposite is true. If you ban it, that means people living in Vator under a ban will be able to grow up to sixty plants. So now we have a very different problem around town. So if you say no, you put down a ban, what happens is everybody that was growing their marijuana up in Centralia, in Longview, wherever they used to do this, but now can't, they're looking for places where they can. Vator will be such a place. So we think we have problems with medical marijuana and people growing marijuana in backyards, garages, wherever now, we'll have that tenfold with a banned place. The second problem this creates, if you do not like marijuana in town, is that you have no ability to, and, you know, you don't, you don't have any policing ability, so you don't have any extra money. So you have more people coming in town to grow marijuana than the existing people who grow marijuana and no way to do anything about it. And so if that wasn't bad enough for marijuana haters, think about this. If you were a marijuana grower in the city of Vator last year, last month, and you were wholesaling your product happily out of town to the dispensaries, what happens when these dispensaries are either shut down or they are forced to play by the new state rules? They'll no longer be able to wholesale their products to the dispensaries. So if you were a smart grower and you have thousands of dollars of products, what are you gonna do with it? You can't sell it the way you used to sell it. So now you're forced to sell it retail yourself. So now we have an additional problem of not only do we invite more growers into Vator because Vator is a place you can grow more marijuana than you can elsewhere, but now you have to retail it yourself. So we're gonna create a black market system that will thrive in Vator where you'll have cornered dealers dealing person by person and you can imagine the effect on crime that has. So we welcomed in more growers, we've let the existing growers grow more plants, now they don't have a place to sell it out of town anymore, they're selling it in town, which has predictable effects on crime and no need money to do anything about it. On the other hand, if you have a retail store in town, you may not like marijuana at all, you may not like having a retail store in town, but what that retail store does is it means that you can't have these growers in town either. So they're mutually exclusive. If you have a retail store, you can't have also the sixty plant thing happening within so many miles of that store. So that is the ticket out of the black market. If you don't want the black market to thrive in Vator, you need a retail store. And another advantage of the retail store is they've opened up a new spigot of money. Whoever runs a retail store, and by the way, that can't be, I can't do a retail store and a wholesale operation. So I'm, I'm just saying this because I think this would be a positive thing for Vator. You have a retail store, Vator gets a cut of that tax money now. So before, under the old tax system, the money goes straight to the state. There was not a direct pipeline of money to the city. That changes now. Now we have a direct pipeline of money, so the more marijuana that gets sold, the more tax that they make, it is lead at the local store here, that goes straight to city hall. There's a second source of revenue that they have opened up under this new law. So this changes the tax structure and the way that this benefits Vator is if you, if you say there's no ban in Vator, in other words, marijuana businesses can locate here, then you just get free money. Whether I open my store, whether I do anything or not, Vator starts getting free money. So it is a direct pipeline from the tax of the marijuana to city hall. So two direct sources of free money coming straight to city hall. And how's that not a good thing? Every time I come to a city council meeting, I hear these heartbreaking stories, we're scrapping for money, it's five hundred dollars here, we're trying to fix the street light there, we're doing pot holes. I mean, I wanna make this place better, I wanna be a part of that. And unfortunately, that takes money. We can't run an effective city without money.
Can dispensary buy from you?
Yeah, excuse me, unfortunately. Yeah, unfortunately, we're not able to.
I don't mind taking questions, by the way.
Sure, yeah, but it's councils.
Well, the council has the discretion to say whether they have questions. If you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I think the council is assinating that, but the council members can decide if you want to.
Yeah, we just mentioned that, that it's gonna be part of their time allotment? Was that what we decided?
Yeah, they still have to ask us, have to raise their hand.
Yes.
Just can't flirt out.
So would you?
I'll get your hand.
Sure.
All the tools, you guys. I don't know what happened to, by this question.
Well, we just said you can make a question to the presenter if you'd like to.
No, it's fine.
But the council had just said.
Points to bring up, is there a time I can do that?
Right now, the council just invited you to share a question.
Brandon's time right now.
I'm sorry, Brandon?
I'm happy to answer questions, I can be around after the meeting. Ten, ten minutes is, is a lot to, I mean, there are a lot of changes here and I was hoping, you know, I, I hoped to get a meeting with you guys before this meeting to where we could talk about some of the changes and how that is affecting the town. But the problem is you're gonna see.
We do have a question that has arisen, that we noted.
So, I, it's a two-part thing. So first of all, you say it's the lesser of two evils. So it's either a retail store or a war. So it, so it's, it's just, you gotta decide, you're gonna, what you're saying is you're gonna get either or. And the other thing is, it's gonna ban permits, but if the city council will decide to vote on it, they can ban everything. No collective growing and nothing, no pot within city limits.
Not true.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, it's, it's, so I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, so what, what was the point? Is that, that let's sort two evil?
Right, you are choosing between, if you put a ban in place, what you're banning is meat. You're banning legal marijuana with a state license. So I'm not growing marijuana on the west side of town, I'm not hiring people, I'm not creating jobs, I'm not doing all that stuff, I'm not bringing tax revenue to the city, you keep that out. But when you ban meat, what you welcome is backyard growers with their sixty plants. And it will be legal per state law for those people to be here as long as you have no retail store. So the state has given us, as a city, this carrot and stick approach. See, what they're trying to do is they're trying to encourage jurisdictions all across the state to have, to, to have a retail store because the only way that you can eliminate the black markets entirely from the state is by giving people access to marijuana, that's medical marijuana, right, any kind of marijuana. So these are PTSD patients, if these are people with an injury that they get, you know, help and their pain, they all have to go to the same store. There's no difference anymore between a medical marijuana store and a recreational. So you get a recreational license, a medical endorsement, it is the same store. So you are now choosing between, if you put a ban in place that bans all marijuana, that doesn't, you don't get a, a Vator loophole for that city plant limit, that's a state law, you have to follow that as a city. So there will be people, not only the people that are growing here right now, that are already growing, my suspicion is you will be welcoming new people in the town that were growing somewhere else, but no longer can grow over there because they're close to a retail store. They're gonna find somewhere like Vator to come and grow because it will be legal in Vator.
Okay, I would note to the council that since you assigned ten minutes per individual, Mr. Milton began at eight minutes to seven, and we're now at four minutes plus, that's twelve minutes. Do you want to hear the next presenter or continue or add time to?
Hear the next presenter. I wanna hear the next presenter.
You'd like to, Mr. Flynn says he'd like to hear the next presenter.
Just fair, yeah, I'll wait.
Okay. Then we have two of the three council members, so we may have extra time and we'll let, the council may decide what to do with the extra time.
I can also be available after the meeting, cause like I said, there's a lot to take in and I think these are game-changing rules, go for the city and anybody in the state, so I guess I might pay attention on it.
But I'd let you know, Mr. Milton, it's your request to meet with us, we did, granted by our city attorney and machine suggested that we not participate in that particular function, given the legal sensitivities of the issue. So just as a matter of information. So who is the next person?
I think it says Aaron Deeger. Is that the guy that left?
I guess the guy left.
Well, that's okay. Did he know that he had? Well, we've allocated thirty minutes for the public hearing. Do we have, would the council like to hear another individual or have someone volunteer to sign up?
If there's more time.
Allow Mr. Milton to proceed for a few minutes?
No.
Go for it, I think we're good.
That would be a yes or no?
I think we've had, he had his time, he said what he had to say and we're done.
Okay. And other opinions?
I think we made that clear, just with the allotment of ten minutes. And so it's either the thirty minutes or the ten minutes and the ten minutes.
Okay, per individual individuals? Mr. Wilson, your thoughts?
I don't know.
Okay. So I perceive that the council would, would terminate the public hearing, given that all three were, who signed up and indicated a willingness to, to be heard, have either left or completed their thoughts. With that, then, I would formally declare this public hearing adjourned at seven oh seven P M. And that, I would officially reconvene our city council meeting at seven oh seven P M. Because we didn't conclude the council meeting, but inasmuch as that was the final phase of the city council meeting, but yes, Mr. Wilson.
I would like to go back to where we started by Reggie Smith and Linda. I'd like to see the city give them some kind of little gift, like maybe a little certificate or something like that. They work, I tell you.
They work, run hard.
They worked hard and I would have liked to have been able to get out and help them, but I tell you, he did, with all the years that I had done the fireworks show for the city of Vator out of my own pocket and my family's pocket, he done one fabulous job, period. I was involved with such a sale of fireworks and I'd say that they both done a fabulous job.
You re-noted, well, with that suggestion, we'll proceed to bring that about. With that, inasmuch as there are no further agenda items of the official city council meeting, I would declare this council meeting adjourned at seven oh.